Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we have a moment of silence for Kevin Neary. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening again. Welcome to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners Caucus Meeting on March the 2nd, 2023. George, please have roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Baako?
Here.
Commissioner Godioso?
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Here.
Commissioner Neary?
Here.
Lisa Catania?
Here.
Michael Pierce?
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. This evening, we will have two presentations. The first one will be from Flow Analytics Analytics on Upper Chichester Township Ward Redistricting. The second presentation will be by the applicant for 659 Conchester Highway Land Development Application. Representative from Flow Analytics, you're welcome to begin.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for letting us be here tonight. I'm going to share my screen in one second. Pull this up. All right. Okay, so hopefully you all can see this. Are y'all able to see this?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to zoom into the view. All right. Great. So to start off with introductions, again, my name is Rebecca Wright. I'm a project manager with Flow, and I'm joined by my colleague, who I'll let introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Emma Swanson, a GIS technician with Flow. I've been here for about a year, almost exactly, but I'm from Virginia, so I love the area code 571 I saw. It's nice to see.
And we have two other folks who are not with us tonight, but they are on the project team. Tyler Vick, he is our principal in charge, and he is Flow's managing director. And Kate Doran, she's our senior GIS analyst. And as I mentioned before, we are really excited to be able to work with you all on this reapportionment project. We have had a great time, a lot of great conversations with George and Gabby leading up to this. So we look forward to showing you all what we have started on to date, and we're happy, of course, to answer any questions that you all have. So just to start off about who we are, we are a GIS consulting firm that are based out of Vancouver, Washington, but we have folks all across the country, myself and Emma. So I'm located in North Carolina, Emma's in Texas. And we really focus on providing bold and innovative solutions to improve communities. We do a ton of redistricting and reapportionment work in all sizes of districts, townships, cities, school districts, some of the latest clients we've worked with is the city of New Orleans, Brookhaven, Georgia, Griffin, Georgia, and many, many more. So we love this work. It's something that's very near and dear to our heart, especially because we are very much focused on providing impartial data-driven approaches to reapportionment, and we really focus on providing objective analysis. So we do not work for political parties. We solely work for local governments and school districts on this work. So just to talk about what it is really quickly, and I know you all have been through this before, so you're very familiar with this, but maybe for members of the public who haven't been through this process before. So every 10 years after the release of the US Census, commissioner wards have to be redrawn so that each ward is reasonably equal in population. And we'll talk about what that means a little bit later on. So that process, it's called reapportionment. Another word for it is redistricting. And it's essentially ensuring that each commissioner represents about the same number of constituents. So you're looking for that equal representation across ward boundaries. So we started this work back in January. We had a kickoff meeting, and we started by looking at your current ward boundaries and the amount of population in each of those. And so we'll be talking and presenting that information tonight. And then we also started working on some draft options for reapportioning those wards in order to make sure that they were reasonably equal in population. And so we'll be presenting both that assessment of the current population balance and the draft options development tonight. So then we're having this meeting tonight to present these things. And after this meeting, there will be opportunities from you all and for members of the public to be able to submit feedback to us in order to inform developing at least one final option that we will present to you all either in April or May. It's looking like May at this point, but we'll get confirmation about that later on. So I know that's still being figured out. So we will be able to come back to you all at a second time and be able to present final option or options that reflect the feedback that we received between now and then. So in terms of what we're looking at when we're thinking about making changes to the ward boundaries, there are some things that must be done, and then there's some things that should be done. So in terms of what must be done, wards must be population balanced. And again, we're going to talk about what that means. They must be contiguous. So that's really important that they're... We have a graphic that shows us that there aren't any... That they don't have any islands. They're kind of compact but not separated out. It must be done in compliance with all local, state, and federal laws, including the Federal Voting Rights Act. And it cannot be done to favor or disfavor a protected class or political party. Wards should be as compact as possible, so that's really important. Preserving communities' mutual interests, for example, local neighborhoods, and then also preserving the use of existing natural boundaries. So these are all things that we took into consideration when developing the draft options that we'll be presenting to you all tonight. So this is just graphics. If you're a visual learner like myself, it's helpful sometimes to see what this looks like graphically. So again, contiguity, that's all together, not separated out, no islands, compactness. You don't want something to look like a squiggly line. You want it to be all succinct in one place. And then you also want to think about major streets, roads, that are going to be helpful in helping folks understand where their boundary lines are. Something else that we really focus on and take into consideration is protecting communities of mutual interest. So what that means is a community of interest is a population that shares common social and economic interests that should be included with a single ward for purposes of its effective and fair representation. So we don't really define that any further. And this is where you all, as commissioners, and the public can provide feedback to us on what your communities look like and how we could make sure that the ward boundaries, if they are revised, reflect those communities. But as much as possible, you want to make sure that those communities are intact and preserved. So there are ways that you can share that information with us, and we'll have a slide that presents a couple slides that show you how to provide that information. But we really do rely on you all to let us know what your communities are and what the boundaries are and why those are the boundaries for your community so that we're able to incorporate that feedback into the final option development. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Emma to start talking through the current assessment balance.
Thanks, Rebecca. Yeah, so this slide shows the existing wards, just in Flow's kind of color format. So you'll see this kind of map with the colors underneath. The dark blue lines are going to be changing, but the dark blue lines are the existing wards. So those are still on the rest of the maps for reference to see the change areas. So these are your existing wards. And then reapportionment... So we'll talk more about balancing the population. The way that we analyze this mathematically is with standard deviation. So we want to make sure that the ideal population is just... You have five wards. We're going to divide the total population of your area into five equal parts. So the ideal population is equal among all the wards. But obviously, that's probably unrealistic. Nobody ever is able to split their wards up evenly. So the wiggle room is 10%, and that's 5% above. It could... It looks different in different ways, but it could be 5%. One ward could be 5% above the ideal population. And then another ward could be under 5% of the ideal population, and together those make 10%. So it's an absolute value of 10%. So all the other wards could be equal, but it's not going to work out that way where one is going to be 10% above the ideal population without taking from another ward. So this will all make sense later if it doesn't now, but that's just how we analyze what equal or ideal population balancing looks like. And we're not... Sorry, one more point on that slide. We're not looking at total population... Or sorry, we are looking at total population, but we're looking also at things like the citizen voting age population, which we can talk about further as well. And those are exactly what it says, citizen voting age. But we're looking at total population, children, non-citizens, all that together. Okay, so comparing the 2010 and 2020 census data, it doesn't change very much with your wards, and that's because of previous reapportionment process. And it was understood that there was a lot of constraints in the previous process, which makes sense, given the shapes of state representatives cutting through the area. So the difference is that the overall range before was 67.6%. That's the overall deviation. And then the overall range, given the 2020 census, is 66.3%. So really, really high. And we need to get that percentage down below 10%. So there's going to be a lot of changes, but this is why we need everybody's opinions to make sure that the new maps, map, final map, reflects what you all agree with and want your wards to look like, given that it's going to have to come down from 66.3% to 10 or below 10, really. That's the legal limit. Yeah, next slide, Rebecca. Okay, so this is just a map showing the previous statistics, just on a map, given the population change between 2010 and 2020. So you can see that it's kind of an even spread, a little bit even change. But it looks like Ward 5 and Ward 1 kind of have two extremes. They lose kind of a good amount of people and they gain kind of a good amount of people. It just depends on the census blocks. And I'll also note that the... What's on the map right now, those are the census blocks. And you can see they're all weird shapes, like they're really strange. This isn't unheard of. There's a lot of really weird census blocks out there. But these are the building blocks of the wards and how we make the changes because it's the only way we can guarantee population counts and demographic counts in each of the wards in order to get to that balanced population. So if you see, there's a really dark orange block in Ward 3. That is such a weird shape, and that would be a strange shape if we drew a ward around it. So even though some of the wards look kind of funny, and they are technically contiguous and they are technically compact, but they still look strange, and that's just given the shapes of the census box. So just keep that in mind. If you see the maps and you're like, this is the weirdest shape, it's probably due to the census blocks. Okay, so we talked about the changes between 2010 and 2020. You see, it's a... Actually, it's a decrease of 1%, so that should have a negative. But the decrease of 1% between 2010 and 2020, total population. And we can get more into the wards. The wards that we would have to balance the most would be 5 and 1 because they're the highest. And then 2 and 4 wards are kind of similar, and 3 is sitting really close to even. But again, all of them are kind of going to have to be impacted because wards 1 and 5 have to change the most, and those populations have to go elsewhere. And then these are the... This is the demographic analysis breakdown for 2020 census. And this is a total population as well. This is not CBAP or citizen voting age population. But you can see that all the population total is predominantly white. And then when you break it down per ward, it's also predominantly white, except for Ward 2. So that has a higher black or African-American population. Kind of the same with Ward 3 and 5, so they're all kind of around that same 20-ish, 18%. So we just have to make sure that we're not, like, splitting any areas of interest, communities of interest, and minority groups. And right now, we're not really going to be in... We're still in compliance of this because each ward is predominantly white. And this is the citizen voting age population breakdown. So the way that the Voting Rights Act wants us to look at the citizen voting age population to not break apart any communities of... or community or minority interests. And the only place... The two places that will be close to that are Wards 2 and 3, but they're still really predominantly white, so it's not really going to be cracking or I can't remember the other term, cracking or compacting any minority groups. Okay, now we'll get to the draft maps. So they were developed with current ward boundaries and then also looking at neighborhoods. A previous map that's been proposed in the... which we'll get to, but a previous map that was proposed in reapportionment before. And then not one single draft map that we're presenting here is expected to become the final map. We really want folks' input and their opinions on each map. We can change them, you know, look at them. We're still constrained by balancing population and other, you know, key factors that we talked about. But they can change, definitely, before they're presented to... for approval. And just like we said, the final map's going to meet all the criteria. We'll ensure that as we go through this process. But again, none of these maps are going to be set in stone right now. They'll be... We'll have... Once public comment closes and we look at the maps based on public comment, then we'll propose the final map or possibly two maps, but one map will be decided on. Okay, so as we look through the maps, things to keep in mind are that Draft Map 1 is based on the previously proposed reapportion map from 2015. It's still going to be below 10%. The previous map was not below 10% based on the current 2020 census information. So there are some slight adjustments. And then Draft Map 2, the main focus that we had was aligning to neighborhood boundaries as best as possible, but none of them are going to be perfectly aligned, A, because of census box, and B, because if we did align perfectly with neighborhood boundaries, the deviation would be above 10%, and we legally can't do that. So Draft Map 2, we're trying to aim for below 5%. It's close to zero for the deviation is best. So that's what Draft Map 2 is about. Draft Map 3 is dropping Draft Map 2's deviation even lower and trying to get it as close to 0% as possible. So there are some neighborhoods that might be less aligned. In Draft Map 3, Draft Map 2 is really the neighborhood map. Draft Map 3 is neighborhood plus as close to 0% deviation as possible. So you'll see this here. So the red arrows show the change areas and where we're grabbing. For example, in Ward 2, we're grabbing a piece from Ward 3 into Ward 2, and you can see that displayed. But the biggest takeaway here is that this is a map just for something to go off of because it was previously proposed. But because of the state representative cuts, obviously, it wasn't going to be passed. So that's okay. We're taking another look at it. You can throw it out if you don't like it. But Draft Map 1 is at 7.5%, which is pretty high. It's still within our 10% range, but it is on the higher end of all three of the maps. And Ward 5 has the highest population over the ideal at 4.6%. And Ward 1 has the lowest population compared to the ideal at under 3%. Now, the other thing to consider when receiving public comment or giving public comment is that if you expect Ward 1... We have to go off of the 2020 census, but within... We recommend that if you think Ward 1 is going to have a really big boom in population in the next five years, and we're going off of all other criteria are met, Ward 1 can have a lower population like this negative 3% because as it grows, it will be closer to the ideal population. So that's something else to keep in mind. Okay, now Draft Map 2, as I said, is the neighborhood map. It's sitting at 4.6%. And you can see that a larger group, neighborhood, and that is Twin Oaks Farm, is going into Ward 2. But all the other pieces, like, let's see, Boothwin Highlands and then Larkins Corner are kind of being brought into other wards as well as the big pieces. So we're looking at aligning to the neighborhoods, but you can see it's really big changes. But it's with good purpose, I think, if you really want to align to neighborhoods. If you don't, that's okay. We'd love your feedback on that. If there's something else we need to consider here, but you like Draft Map 2, that's also great feedback. Or, you know, if you don't think it's aligning to your neighborhood, this is why we need public comment. So Ward 4 is over population, ideal population, by 1.6%. And Ward 1 is similar. It's actually the exact same from Draft Map 1, where Ward 1 is under by negative 3% or 101 people. So you can also see that we're kind of working with a tight number of folks. So if we move the way the census blocks are laid out, there could be one census block that teeters on Wards 1 and Ward 2 that are... That holds 274 people. So it's a big number to move around, considering how tight we're working with right now. Okay, and Draft Map 3 is pretty similar to Draft Map 2, like I said. And the difference is here is that Draft Map 3's deviation is 1% compared to Draft Map 2's 4.6. So this is a pretty good drop. It's as close to zero right now as we have. And we're looking at Wards 4 being above by 5% ideal population and Ward 1 being under by 5% population. And the numbers are even tighter here. But it's totally okay to be above this 1% if you feel like there's a good group of people that would rather be represented in Wards 3 versus Wards 2. This is why we need public comment. But we would also love feedback on maybe, you know, the most constructive feedback would be, we... I like Draft Map 1, but I don't feel my neighborhood is represented in this specific way. It's nice to have something to go off of. But we have a scenario modeler as well that's available to the public on the reapportionment website that folks can play with. Each of these scenarios, move people around as they see fit. These are just the examples for right now. Okay.
Thanks, Emma. All right, so just to review the timeline, so I just went through the draft maps. So again, we need... This is the public feedback portion. This is the time between now and the next meeting when we need all the feedback on revising the maps to get them ready for the final review in... Whenever that happens, presumably in May. And we can tonight, if it would be helpful, I know you all have the links to... We can show you all the reapportionment engagement portal and the district scenario modeler. So we are happy to do that if you would like us to spend the time. I'm going to skip over this for now, but we're happy to come back to that. And then, as I mentioned before, in order to provide feedback, there's multiple ways to do that. One, you can go to the reapportionment engagement portal, click on the district scenario modeler, design your own maps, and send them to us. We can get them that way. So that's real... It's a really cool tool you can use. You can play around with all the districts or wards and move them around. You can use the base layers that Emma set up in there, so it's... You don't have to start from scratch. But that's one way to provide feedback. The other way to provide feedback is by calling this phone number or email address. So those are the three different ways that members of the public or commissioners even can submit feedback to us. And with that, we just want to say thank you so much. We're happy to answer any questions or show you anything else that you would be interested in seeing.
I was going to ask them, yes. If you could show us the website, the tool, that would be nice. That would be helpful.
So Emma, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so you can share yours.
Can y'all see it?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, so this is the reapportionment website. At the top, we have just like a brief little description about reapportionment. We have right here ways that you can participate along with... I forgot. This button right here is the translate, so you can translate into different languages, the whole website. And then the draft maps, there's a PDF link of each draft map. There's a PDF link of each statistics, kind of breaking down each of the draft maps more, showing the citizen voting age population of each, showing the deviation, all those statistics. And then we also have the district or ward scenario modeler tool, which I'll show in a minute as well. But each of these links takes you to the base map of each of those of the tool. It's going to be Draft Map 1, the next link, the base map is going to be Draft Map 2, et cetera. And then here is the button to the... Another version of the district scenario modeler. And then here is the button to the another version of the district scenario modeler tool. This button takes you to the existing ward layout. So that's that's that base map. And I'll show that in a minute. And then you can submit, it's just showing the the email address to submit comments or questions as well. Here's our timeline. We'll update, you know, right now, we're thinking May, could be April with the the final map presentation and voting. So we will update this as as we go along. Also, this is the meeting and events calendar, which will also be updated. We'll put the link to this presentation in there. And we have information for how folks can participate and call in here as well. The location, which y'all are in now. And we have some frequently asked questions at the bottom about reapportionment too. So this is the website and let me go to, I'll show you an example of the summary statistics of draft map one. And this, this is what it looks like in deviation that we showed on the maps here. And then race and ethnicity per ward and citizen voting age by ward as well. So that's an example. And then I'll show an example of the district scenario modeler tool, which is what it's called, obviously, for you all, it's wards. So the base map for this is going to be draft map one. So this, the colors don't align with your existing wards right now because the the base map is draft map one. And just a quick demo, I guess, you're looking at a 7.5% with draft map one. If you change, so what what you'd have to do is the tool is already set up. So you would click on or drag and highlight a couple census blocks. These are the geographies. We say remove from Ward two because that's the green color. And then we right click or hover. And we say, okay, let's add those to, add the blocks to draft to Ward three. Because maybe my my neighborhood wants to be split more here and we'd rather that portion go to Ward three. The statistics change with your different ward assignments. So now the total deviation is 13.5. So you can see how quickly it gets out of balance and how you can see in live action how the geographies are a bit funny. Or you can highlight and just hover and see that this whole census block has a population of seven people. So moving it might not cause too much of a stir in terms of moving away from the ideal population. But geographically, it looks kind of funny. So this is where folks can play around themselves with the geographies and the population. And they can also highlight the different, let's see, highlight the different neighborhoods. So you can see how right now in draft map one, Boothland Heights is split between wards four and five. And you can see how as well. And you can see the demographic breakdown of what you highlighted. Or, let's see. There we go. I'm going to unselect the neighborhood. And of course, it doesn't work as easily as you wanted to. Okay, just have to click on the neighborhood twice. And folks can submit their map. This is a survey to submit the map and it comes directly to us. So we'll be reviewing those throughout the the public engagement process.
Okay, great. Thank you for the demonstration. Any questions from board?
Can you go back to draft map one? I just want to, I just want to look at the arrows, where the, what was going into what ward?
Yeah, Rebecca, do you want to share your screen then?
Yep.
I think, I think I know what it is, but I'd just like to just confirm it.
Give me one second, it's loading. There we go.
Yeah, the biggest changes for that one is Boothland Heights moving more into Ward five specifically.
All right, there we go.
Okay. Just give me one second. Okay, thank you.
And ju- just to be clear, you can't break the census block with this system, correct?
Cannot break the census block. We can't guarantee, right, yeah, we cannot guarantee the population or the demographic makeup when it's split. Just because that's the smallest piece of geography we have access to.
And what's the web address for this again? Are you, are you going to be sending that to us?
It's here.
Okay, all right. That was it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, okay. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
George, can we get the lights or chief, can we get the lights? Thank you. Okay, next we'll have the presentation by the applicant for 659 Conchester Highway Land Development Application.
Good evening, Matt McQ. I'm an attorney for McDonald's. We're here this evening to discuss the land development plans for a new McDonald's restaurant at 659 Conchester Highway. This is in the Larkens Corner Shopping Center. The redevelopment of the Taco Bell site. As part of this project, McDonald's is going to be closing their existing Boothland location, which is across the other side of Conchester Highway. They're going to be leasing a portion of Larkens Corner, which will result in a demolition of the existing Taco Bell site and development of a new approximately 4,000 square foot McDonald's restaurant with a two employee side by side drive through feature. We were before the zoning hearing board in December, we were granted a number of variances that related to parking for the McDonald's site and also for the overall shopping center. And then for signage for the building, the drive through, menu boards and freestanding signs along Conchester Highway. We have land development plans that have been submitted. They've been reviewed by your professional staff. And we've been to the planning commission for a recommendation of approval. I have with me representatives from McDonald's, Island Seaburger. I'm also Mary Bacher from Bowler Engineering who prepared the plans. I'll have Mary come up, give a brief presentation of what the, what the plans show. And then we can discuss the review letters and resolution.
Evening, everyone. Mary Bacher, Bowler Engineering. Again, as was mentioned, this is for the redevelopment on the corner on the image here, where the Taco Bell was, kind of at that main access drive into the shopping center. So can we move, do I have control?
Andrew, can you also adjust the mic so that maybe lean it in so we can hear you? It's kind of low. Talking to the mic, that would be helpful, yes.
I wasn't loud enough last time either. I'll try better.
Okay, thank you.
All right. This is just the survey of existing conditions with the Taco Bell location. You can see where the existing curb line is and access drive. So we will be expanding the lease area slightly. The McDonald's is almost twice the size of the Taco Bell. So we need to, a little bit more room to orient that in there. We also did work with the township's engineer and took their feedback about rotating the the layout of the drive through and kind of optimizing that on the site. So here is how it will sit into the overall shopping center. And I'll show you a larger view here. So again, as was mentioned, this is a modern 4,000 square foot McDonald's compared to the older style that's across the street. And it has a two to one style side by side drive through. And what that means is there's two stacking lanes to two order points that combine town to one pickup lane. The site circulation is primarily one way around the building. However, there are full access driveways along the access drive here, which moves diagonally across the screen. So down in the bottom left corner and then kind of central to that. If you remember, I talked about on the existing conditions that the access lane was relocating. So the prior lane was more about here. And this throat on this kind of four way, and then there was another four way right here. We are actually shifting that and expanding that. So there's a little bit more stacking room to this existing four way intersection. And that realignment just provides better circulation, not only for the McDonald's, but in the shopping center. So associated with our improvements beyond the side by side drive through, there's all your standard site improvements, which are going to be landscaping, lighting, trash enclosure with the appropriate screening, ADA facilities, et cetera. It's just a grading plan. Our landscape plan, which shows the, as I mentioned, the screening around trash enclosure, but also all of the other plantings required by the ordinance. And then trees in the relocated islands. Just the truck turns. We did have the lighting plan modeled for the adjacent shopping center poles as well to show how the McDonald's lighting would work with that. And this is the signage plan that went through the zoning process. This is a similar style building. So this is not a rendering exactly of this building, but this is the prototypical building and finishes as well as a similar signage package. So the style and size and color of the signs are what will be on this building, but they may not necessarily be in the same locations. And then this is actually the black and white elevation of the building that is proposed at this site.
Thanks, Mary. So we have review letters from your staff. We're generally, we'll comply on all those items. We will be submitting revised plans once we get resolution and approval to address any of those comments before going to recording. We have a couple of minor waivers to our really technical ones for preliminary final. The other deals with the imagery and the aerial and existing features that are shown on the plan. And the third one is a waiver for sidewalk along Conchester Highway. And the waiver there is, and Dodd, as part of their road widening, is going to be performing sidewalk or installing sidewalks at some point during that process. So we're asking for a waiver. The recommendation from your staff is to pay a fee of love. We're in the process of negotiating that amount with them right now. So we've reviewed the resolution that was prepared by your solicitor. We're generally in agreement with it. Happy to answer any questions regarding the project.
Any questions from board?
I have one. What's your intentions with the old building?
There isn't a set disposition plan yet. So McDonald's continue to evaluate their options with that property.
What's the maximum capacity for the 4,000 square foot, 4,000 square foot building? 66 seats?
So the old building, you you stated that McDonald's will continue to assess that and decide what they want to do with it.
Right, so they own the property, obviously, they'd be looking to if they don't have to enter fire or anybody.
You'll continue to maintain the property?
Absolutely.
Any other questions, engineer or solicitor?
None.
George? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up the meeting to citizens' comments. Any person that is online, you may dial 571-748-4021. In the numbers 571-748-4021, enter the numbers 357-1690 pound, 357-1690 pound as your code. To unmute yourself, press star six. We'll give it a couple of minutes to see if there's anyone that wants to call in with a comment. Then we'll open up to the the floor. Thank you. Hearing no comments from the the phone, any comments from the public? Anyone in attendance that would like to make a comment? Question or comment, come to the podium. Okay. All right, we will open it up to our professionals' report, our engineers' report, Ms. Katanga.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You do have a copy of my report, just a few updates. We received the notice of termination for the for the MPDS for the Wawa. So they've been close to finishing that project. I will by next week hopefully have a schedule for the rest of the punch list work that needs to be completed to finally close that project out. Autozone, I have not heard anything from them. They again are in a punch list mode. My guess would be they would be waiting until the the better weather in the spring to complete that work. We have hopefully the Creekside Village project. Jauder is proposing, if we can keep rain away to, because the weather has gotten nicer, to start within the next couple of weeks is what we're, we're. It's going to take them about three days to do that. So we'll let the residents know when we're, when we're proposing to do that a couple of days beforehand. So they're aware. Alliance, we have received the highway occupancy permit. We've been asked to sign the signal permit plan. There are a couple of changes that need to be made on the signal permit plan per the review of our traffic consultant. So that's being done at the moment. There will be an easement agreement between the township and Alliance for the traffic signal. So that's some of the work that that we're waiting for. Duncan, as you can see, there's been some work done. I wanted to to thank Jim Putman because we were concerned with some, some issues with an existing drive and the new ingress, the egress decel lane. Wanted to make sure that it was safe. And he took his gang out and did some work with some signage. So I wanted to probably thank him for that. We'd like to keep that area safe. So I wanted to probably thank him for that. We'd like to keep that area safe as possible during the transition. The Gare Plastics, I had a conversation with the consultant. So that project should be getting closed out. He is close to giving us the Asbils and that will complete that punch list. The 3A Namens Creek, we've completed another review of that. I believe that that will be on your agenda next week for an extension. Right? The multimodal grant, we have an invoice, number five, in the amount of $139,508.52 for Premier. They are continuing work and will be continuing work right now. They're probably about 40% complete on that project. The Green Lake O, you'll soon be seeing our survey crew out doing survey work along 452 in order to start that sketch plan design work. So I hope we may need some help with that depending on how crazy the traffic gets. But as of now, I think we're safe to get started. The working with the team, as we're calling it, we have a project team to do grants. We are currently working on three different grant applications and will continue doing that. As far as the stormwater, we have a terrace circle basin right now is in a punch list mode. It is substantially complete. That will be completed in the spring. And we do have an invoice number two in the amount of $18,179.74. We're going to maintain the contingency until such time as everything's finished. So we do have enough money to complete that, that project should the contractor not return. He's done a really nice job with that. I highly doubt that that will be the case. Plum Peach and Cherry Stormwater Project continues. We are probably about 60% complete on that project. We are finished from Cherry Street through the Swale to Plum Street. They were working on Plum Street and some of the backyard of Mrs. Toy's property on Plum. So that is continuing. We have a payment for them as well in the amount of $117,994.50. Otherwise, I believe the road program is, the lists are being forwarded to Mr. Putman and once we have, have the streets, we'll get an estimate together. I believe we're going to look for an authorization to bid. I'm looking at George because I see it on my agenda. So do an authorization to bid that project for next month. That's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions for engineer?
I just have several. The handicap access work, that's to be done at Mill and Chi. I was hoping we can get that done soon.
I'm hoping it's still in the HOP process. So once we get something from PennDOT, we'll move forward with that. Yes, that is on the agenda.
Okay. And then any update from the Garden Town Hall meeting that we had regarding about maybe painting some stripes for setbacks for when the residents come out from the, from the fruit streets, from the fruit trees on the, on the Chichester Avenue?
Getting the pavement markings done. I don't know. I have to talk with the chief, but we'll get that.
Okay. And then I received a phone call from a resident regarding the sidewalk work on Chichester Avenue. Particularly at Beeson Avenue, they're hoping to get some flagmen out there to direct traffic when they're coming off side streets on, on the Chi Avenue. And then I submitted my street list to Jim Putman for the road program for 2023. Just wanted to make sure that you receive it also.
So what was a concern about on Beeson?
When the residents are coming out on, just on their side streets, the concern was there wasn't enough flagmen or there was no flagmen out there to rough the traffic. I guess, you know, cautioning people to stop or slow down to let the, to let the all common traffic coming on to Tri Avenue as, as the work is going on.
Yeah, it's a tight area to work.
It's a one way, it's a one way out. So, okay. Thank you.
The, real quick, the pavement markings. So we have been putting together a list of all the pavement markings that we need to do. We are going to go through a CoStars provider probably May, once the weather gets a little bit warmer. So we can get that on this list as well.
Yeah, I gave, I think I gave Put the, the CoStars contractor. Yep.
Thank you. I'm sorry. You finished? Okay. I have one just about the Peach Street. We had the issue last month about the difference where the contractor indicated that he wasn't going to continue the work. I assume he's finished the work and that's been resolved. Or not finished the work, but I mean.
That has been resolved. We, the argument was that he felt that he was, he was due a change order because of conditions of the soils. Those conditions of the soils were actually brought on by his work. So we told him that we would monitor it if we felt that there was a need for a change order. We certainly would entertain that. When all was said and done, he did the excavation that he needed to do and the soil was fine. We're good.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Our solicitor's report, Mr. Pierce?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman. I will have a written report for you next week. I didn't get to, didn't get to that quite today. The, as you've heard, the presentation for 659 Conchester Avenue Land Development Resolution appears to be ready for at least consideration. If there's any changes or any additional requests, we should know that in advance before next month, next week's meeting so that they can be rectified. Non-under Township Line will be getting another extension. We did speak to the engineer, Mr. Needles and myself. Met with both the attorney and project people on that and it's actually coming along fairly well. It's just they have some logistics issues that they need to, to get squared away and some resubmissions because we basically told them also we didn't want it coming in piecemeal in 17 different times. So the extension's probably the easiest way to deal with it so that we get all these issues ready for an eventual either approval or disapproval. But rather than going back and forth 17 times, as I said, we want them to have as complete a submission as possible. Namens Creek Center Land Development Extension, they're close. They just need a little bit more time to get some of the things squared away on that. Vacation of Locust Street Alley, this was the matter where we were served with an action to acquire a title after having spoken with, with the attorney about what they can do. This was an alley that was basically a paper street. That terminus is basically at I-95. The township has no real interest in opening up that alley with that paper street. I indicated to the attorney that we would, in all likelihood, not be contesting that, but we would just need approval at the township meeting to execute a stipulation to vacate that particular. So half of it would go to the petitioner that filed the action and the other half would go to the adjoining land. Nothing extravagant. We've been through it. I've met with George about it. Everything is, we're good to go with that. We just need the specific authorization so that we can finalize that and that'll end that, that'll end that lawsuit as well. Everything else is pretty much in order. If there's anything else, I'll certainly bring it to your attention before next week.
All right. Thank you. Any questions with a solicitor? Okay, seeing the manager's report, Mr. Needles?
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to say I'll be brief, but we all know that that's not possible. I have three escrow releases for next week. If any other ones come in, bring them. Two of them are related to the Conchester Duncan and then one is a residential project. You will have a document destruction resolution as we have the shredding day coming up. Semi-annually, we, we hold shredding days where we, we dispose of any township documents that retention period. The DCNR grant round is open and we'd like to make a submission for, for a project. The project that we are recommending is to, to, is the Kingsman Park, Park Project portion of the project going on there. So we've accumulated $250,000 through the Delco Greenways Grant. We were given a $100,000 donation from Energy Transfer and we'll be seeking a 50% match of the $250,000 from Delco Greenways so that we can kind of get this, the park portion of that project paid for without using any local taxpayer funds. We've in the past been able to acquire DCNR grant when we matched it with the Delco Greenways. We believe it's a good project. We believe it's a good way to, to partner together for those, those funds. So we'll have a resolution for you next week and some more information about that project. I don't know if you remember when the conversation was happening with the Delco Greenways application. The 250 fell short of what we would needed, what we would need to make sure that we were able to put decent playground equipment in there and handle some of the public improvements for the site. Delaware County has updated their hazard mitigation program and we are asked to adopt it by the way of resolution. We do this every couple of years. This is very important because we do have a hazard mitigation application that has been going through the system and this is one of the requirements for that to go through. Put in your packet, a update from the library project. So we had a, we had a kickoff meeting with the, the traffic engineer, the project engineer, the project architect, various individuals from the township, the township planner, the township engineer, where we talked about the site, talked about the project and came up with, you know, what would be the next steps that we would need to do. So the next steps was that everybody was going to prepare cost estimates and submit them. So we received cost estimates for traffic improvements, public improvements. The public improvements is an estimate because we did not get a public improvement estimate in from anybody. Site improvements, construction costs, and then the cost of all of the designing and engineering throughout the project. So that has been submitted. That cost is in your, in your packets, along with a little bit of a breakdown of what that is and where it came from. The second is a timeline. So this was provided by the engineer as to a reasonable timeline from initial submission through till project completion. And then there is some backup data. That was the data that has been submitted for the cost estimate. And then we've got a couple of items in here to kind of show what the project is at this point. So the first page you have is a rendering of the area that was pulled off of just a Google image to show you the area of the site. The second is a, the proposed site plan that shows the parking, the revised proposed library square footage and all the necessary setbacks. The next page is a cut sheet to show you what the building would look like from various elevations. So you have what the residents across the street on Kingsman would look at and what the, the, the way the building would sit compared to their homes. You have a boxed out version of what you would see from Chichester Avenue. And then on the top, you have the site plan visualized in color to kind of see where it would fit on the site. And then the next page, you have a image, this was done by Dever Architects to show a, a different version of the building from a floor plan perspective with a building square footage of 7,366 square feet. So my recommendation at this point would be that the next step would be to get that project group together again and this time bring the library individuals in as well to sit down and talk about this. The, the cost estimate's a little bit higher than I think where we thought we were going to be from a project perspective. So we've got to look at that. And if you look at the, the cross sections of the, the building comparative to the, of the different elevations, I think we could do some work on that as well. So eventually we will need to get to something that we can say is this is the draft plan for this site plan so that we can proceed forward. And I guess every month that we take to do that, there's additional costs for revisions for all this stuff as well as, you know, it pushes that timeline back, which is a three year timeline back a month. So I want to try to get, tomorrow, we're going to reach out to everybody and get that meeting set up and try to keep this thing moving forward pretty quickly. So that's been one of the things that we've been working on quite a bit in the township lately. The next is we've got two requests for proclamations for the month of April. They're both of them in here. One is for Parental Inhaliation Awareness Day and the other is for the Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month. It's both for April. So just, you know, give me your comments, give me your thoughts and we can get them prepared and go from there. And tomorrow, I'll be, we are taking a little bit of a field trip. Myself, Brian and Gabby will be heading up to HRG's King of Prussia office to meet with them to try to get the parks plan to the, to the final draft stage, to be able to get that to all the township professionals to start the review and to have a meeting on the Stormwater Authority project as to what are all the next steps from that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the manager?
I got one. You heard anything else from Wawa and the old Wawa building?
I mean, just that they're occupying it with that tech, their tech group now.
They've been telling us that for months. Okay.
So they're in there, but it's, they only, they use it sporadically and it's definitely not open to the public. So Bill was in there with all the building permits and everything like that. So everything's been signed off for the CEO for them to use it.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to our commissioner reports. Commissioner Joe Byacko.
I don't use your name on here. Caught me off guard.
Where's your name, man? Is he your?
That's fine.
We'll go.
I'm okay, yeah.
Mr. Neary, you can go. But I don't, I don't need to see you on here.
I'm on the next page.
Two, four, five. You're not on here. You're not even on here. Oh, you got all the, oh, oh, okay. All right, Mr. Neary.
Michaels is so long.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. All of the reports will be available. The reports that you do have in the book are the, the bills paid. And I will tell you that I have gone over the credit card bills and it's saving you about 15 checks a month, save at least 15 a month with just Comcast, which is crazy. Plus, we don't have all the charges that in the past, the late charges, which they would then get forced to eat because Mike, Mike would call them and say, you know, I'm not paying them. So we don't, as a rule, pay late fees and we have been taking discounts. So we are, you know, making improvements in that area. We also have a small exoneration list of four things. The police reports will be available next week as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Neary? Okay. Commissioner Guardiola.
Thank you. I'll try, I'll try to be as quick as possible. 659 Conchester Avenue. McDonald's came in tonight and gave their presentation. We are due next week to vote on a resolution, either for denial or approval. The Planning Board Commission has recommended the project with conditional approval. I know Mr. Needles goes to those meetings. Is there any conditions that they're trying to set?
Well, it's, it's figuring out this, the dollar amount for the fee in lieu of sidewalk. So with 322 coming in, it, we're going to, we're going to see this for development along 322 probably multiple times. So my, myself, Ms. Catania, my Pierce have all been negotiating with the other side as to what that amount should be. And my recommendation would be that the Board of Commissioners earmark that towards a match money towards grant funding for improvements on Chelsea Parkway.
Thank you. 2241 Larkin Road is a reverse subdivision that is under review. I believe Mr. Pierce touched on Lot 3A Namens Creek Road. That'll be going to the planning board again. 33, 30, 30, 33 Marcus Street, that is Alliance. Believe that's going back to the planning board again. And the meantime, they are working out some issues with PennDOT. 801 Bethel Road, we're still waiting for updated plans. 900 Township Line Road, again, Mr. Pierce touched on that one. It's a Visano's. It's, that's the Visano's project. They're in the process of submitting the HOP permit to PennDOT. I believe that's on hold for that project also. Zoning Hearing Board, as I mentioned last month, 4880 Chichester Avenue. I believe that piece of property is going to be purchased and demolished for a parking lot. That's for the dentist office right across the street from it. That's Lance Panarello. I believe there's no objections from the board for that happening. And also 2419 Third Avenue, there's another hearing for the zoning board on that one. I believe the board is going to send Mr. Pierce to that zoning hearing board opposing the expanded use for non-conformer use in the residential area. Again, for 4880 Chichester Avenue, I believe Mr. Pierce is going, so I think he would like some direction of whether whether or not the board would like to have that area addressed. So any, anybody from the board?
What's, the house to be demolished?
Yes, the house is going to be torn down and there's going to be a parking lot in there.
The neighbors will get notification, right?
Yes.
Yeah, as long as, you know, make sure none of them are.
He had come to, he had met with George and myself prior to entering into an agreement with them. We indicated they would have to go to the zoning hearing board in all likelihood, just to go through that, but I think based on the information that we were provided and the parking situation that's going on there, it's a viable use if they can get through that. It's going to help out tremendously, so.
And the owner of the house moved out because it's loaded with mold.
Right, that's what I heard, yep.
And I don't know if, I had asked if it was on a historical list.
Not that we're aware of. Obviously, if it is, they may have to go through just some cataloging and stuff. It's pretty uninhabitable right now, as I understand it.
That's property at the top of Summers, right?
Right, right, right at the end, directly across, yes.
I don't think there's any objections from the Historical Society.
Just give them their due diligence.
Lastly, just want to touch on again, Bethel and Mill Road, they're still working on the ranabout there, so I appreciate our residents' patience as that's going along. And I think Mr. Neary addressed it last month. Has there any, has there been any alternative traffic routes submitted to the township yet?
There has not, and I indicated at the last meeting that I would reach out to the, our new state rep in an attempt to get a meeting with PennDOT. I have not heard back from our new state rep yet, so I'm going to now reach out to Senator Kane's office and ask if we can go through him for a meeting with PennDOT.
Also, if we can reach out to our state representative along 322, the island is, it's littered with trash and everything, so I believe that's their responsibility to get cleaned up. So we can reach out to them to try to see if we can get that done.
The section along like Bethel?
Yeah, it's across from the Walmart. In the bowling alley, the old Kate Glenn sign was up.
Sign was it?
Yeah.
Right.
I'll put that on my list.
I don't want to wait 32 years, though. Just want to just put it on the record. Thank you.
Any questions for Commissioner Guardiola? Commissioner Biaco?
Thank you. Highway and sanitation, nothing new to report. I think the trash has been handled. No more complaints. George, have you had any? I think everybody's, I got more compliments on the recycling being weekly than anything. I'll have a highway report next week. Sewer and Water, we're still working on the Horse Main. We're in contact with Lower Chi and they're working out an agreement. I think it's close. That's all I'm going to say. I don't want to jinx this. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
I have a question regarding the trash route. So if there's a holiday on a Monday, which is recycling.
It's a recycling day.
Right. So do they?
They get skipped for that week.
They get skipped for that week.
Because recycling, we felt was it's not like trash. It was every other week. And you can get by with it. It's more convenient now weekly rather than.
Okay, so we don't have to, okay.
We're doing all the recycling in two days. To do a double recycling, we have to pay overtime and stuff.
We are, if the holiday falls on a trash day, we are doing a double pickup the next day, but if it falls on a recycling day, you just, your recycling will be the next week.
The trash will be the next, recycling's not. So it's the Monday holidays, yes.
Right. Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
And half the holidays are on Mondays, so.
Right. Yeah. Okay, good, thank you. And then I will just make.
The call on that, anybody has to, you can always bring recycling up here too. We have the dumpsters.
Okay.
Don't forget.
Good, thank you. All right, so my report, we want to meet, George, would this be executive session or just a check-in? After our meeting tonight. Okay, so we want to meet, if you can all hang out about 10 minutes after the meeting wraps up to discuss a couple of things. Just want to highlight the library and the township. They had a successful bingo night last Saturday. I have a report for recreation and update on our grants next week as well. Commissioner Rakowski had a family emergency, so he wasn't able to be here this evening. He will also have his reports. Hopefully, he'll be here next week. Any other questions? Most adjourned. All right, good night. Oh, second, go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night.